Call of March 8th, 2021, City Council Committee of the Hold Order. The clerk will call the roll.
O'Revolo?
Present.
Burerton?
Here.
Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman? Freeman? Is absent. McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Under public comment this evening, we have none. Under public forum, we have none. Under reports of officers, boards, and special committees this evening, under Item 1, Building, Planning, and Zoning Unfinished Business, there is none to discuss this evening. Under Building, Planning, and Zoning New Business, we have, under A, Planning and Zoning Department Update. Mr. Rose, you have the floor.
So, February was a busy month with cases. We had six of them. In March, there was only one. No, March didn't have any, which was good since I was out of the office with COVID while all that stuff had have been done. So, that worked out very well. Do have one case for April, and I expect several to come in after that. For February, zoning letters and site plans were down, but they're already picking up. I didn't have any zoning letters for February, but I'm already on my fourth one for the month now, and site plans are already doubled compared to what they were in February. Otherwise, again, just fielding phone calls for people curious about our summer activities, working with the health department. The vaccine will be rolled out, but we want to make sure we're still in compliance with everything. So, that's what I've been focusing on for now until I switch care back to cases. Papa Grove has several cases coming up next month as well that I'll be focusing on. And then, that's really it. Like I said, February is kind of a slow month, which was good since I was out of the office for part of it. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Rose?
Thank you.
Okay. Under Item B, we have a special use extension request for 982 Belvedere Road for video gaming.
Yep. So, the applicant could not make it tonight, but I can call him if you have questions directly for him. This is in what's commonly known as the Hewlett Building or the Anytime Fitness Building. He got a special use for video gaming a couple of years ago. Developing it was not a priority because he has several other businesses in the community, and the space he's putting it in, he wants to split in half, so there's bathroom issues and stuff like that since he'd be splitting the tenant's space. He is, he has now found an occupant for the other half of the space once he splits it, so he wants to move forward on getting that going. He has been calling the office with questions about different coda permits for splitting the space and everything. So, he plans to move forward with that this summer, but to be on the safe side, he wanted the special use extended just in case he missed the deadline for building permits.
We have a motion to approve the extension. Motion by Snow may have a second. Second by Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
Just a quick discussion. I heard somebody chime in on the phone. Who joined the call? Did somebody join the call? Is Amanda?
Good evening. Amanda, male, with Boone County Health Department is here.
Okay. Is Alderman Freeman still absent?
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor to extend the special use at 982 Belvedere Road? Hearing none, all those in favor approval, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
O'Revolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion's approved unanimously. Brings us to Item B, another special use extension for 1550 Pearl Street for video gaming.
Okay. So, this is the old DMV building. If you remember, a couple of years ago, the intent was to turn it into a small banquet facility with an occupancy of like 30 to 40 people, so it would be good for, you know, the larger birthday parties or very intimate, small weddings, stuff like that. There, since he was going to put a bar in there for the catering aspect, he wanted video gaming as well. There are some staffing changes that delayed that project. Then COVID hit, delayed that project. So, it is still a project that he is interested in completing, but is asking for an extension. Why, they work out the details.
Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Reville, I may have a second, please. Second by Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor approval, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
O'Revolo?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to Item D, Presentation on the Crystal Parkway Development. We have the developers here. You now have the floor, gentlemen.
Thank you. We have a little PowerPoint that we would like to share, and I'm kind of in the theater and around here, so pardon my best side. With us as well is Kapash Patel. We have Mike, also Patel, from, from the Am Group. And then, we have Nathan Heidner from Heidner Properties. And Bruce Larson is also from Heidner Properties. So, please have, feel free to ask any questions as well. I'm just going to get this into the slideshow format.
Mr. I will have to speak fairly loudly so the people on the phone can hear you as well, but that microphone is not going to work.
Okay. All right. Okay. We're here tonight to just give a conceptual presentation for Speed Trek that will be located at the northwest corner of Genoa Road and I-90. Pardon my back, sir. And we would like to make this presentation in the sense of the whole community aspect of what our business strives to do. The name Speed Trek is in just that. A trek is a journey, and we want this to be a part of the person's journey and the stop that they make. And so, it, usually a retail petroleum facility is not a destination point. It's a siphoning use, and, and that will be some of our customers. But we're hoping to make such a nice offering here that it will kind of sway that and bring people to the site itself. So, this is, again, I mentioned, it's at the northeast corner of Genoa and I-90, part of a larger development with Mr. Walsh. And we have the 10 acres right on the hard corner, literally within one foot of being 10 acres. So, the presentation, as you can see, the building is orientated east, facing Genoa Road with the auto canopy there, and then the CFL canopy behind, which I will delineate a little bit further in this next slide, a little bit bigger. So, what we do is very purposefully, we try to separate the auto traffic from the CFL traffic. So, very purposeful separation. You cannot have any cars accidentally going into that area and vice versa. The purpose of that is just to give people a feeling of security and also direction as to where they're going. We know that what makes retail petroleum facilities successful are two basic things, and that is convenience and a feeling of safety. If you get those items going along with a good product offering, good design, and of course, the third part of the stool is a good operations. And so, we have here an inline eight. An inline canopy is where all the pumps are in a row. It's not a tandem where you have another pump ahead of you and you have to go around the car to get to the, to the dispenser. And literally, it's all in one row, so you can clearly see what's open, clearly access it. Again, emphasis on safety and clarity of circulation. The building itself is roughly 9,000 square feet, and we're offering three food vendors within the building itself. And we have two drive-throughs, a U-shaped drive-through, and then the drive-through through the back of the store itself. Finally, we have the CFL lanes right here with the eight in-lines, cat scale parking. This would be RV parking, some facilities for the RV. So, as, as you progress from east to west, it goes from more auto to more of the professional drivers. The floor plan of the building is also placed in that way in terms of this would be facing east or Genoa Road, main entry. So, this would be where the auto customers are coming in. You have the cashier area. We have the food court over in that area, the gondolas and the coolers themselves, the restrooms, all open door in terms of just, you know, sanitation, not touching and opening and closing doors as you go, separation. In the back here is more of the professional drivers' facilities where their doorway that's facing west comes from the CFL Commercial Fueling Lane is what CFL stands for, items. And then, we have their particular products, lounge area, some laundry for them as well, shower facilities, and support for that. And then, we have the three food offerings. In the lower left hand, that will be most likely Jimmy John's. And then, in the upper left hand would be Dunkin' Donuts with the drive-through. And finally, a specialty pizza offering in the, in the center there. So, we'll have a little food court atmosphere on the left, and on the right, we'll have more of the, the conventional C-store, but not conventional in the sense of our finishes and the product offerings that are being made. Our next slide shows the elevations. The, the building is intended to be fun, and in some of what was the inspiration is what you have here, right in the, the boardroom with the types of colors and the, the top of that, so that's the fun on the left-hand side, the Speed Trek logo being in the center, of course. This whole building is, these are rib panels here. This is an illumination series panels, and then finally, we have the bricks over at the end there. This whole building will be made with what's called structurally insulated panels. It's a new building technique. As you know, energy codes have become more and more requiring higher and higher R-values. And so, a SIP panel, structurally insulated panel building is, it's got the structural elements on the outside and then a baked-in insulation that you get fantastic R-values on. And it goes up very quick, and then you can cover it with different finishes. And so, this building will really reflect that state of art. And so, we have, this is the side that's facing west, side facing east. This is actually north, and we're, we're not proposing to use the same mural. What we're saying is that we would like to have a mural work with your artist groups to be able to create a specific mural for our site that will reflect the benefits of Belvedere. And then, the other side is the drive-through side. Right here, we have the drive-through window on the backside as well. So, just kind of a little fun play of materials and heights, taking effect of the planes, you know, we are in, so we have more of a horizontal element. And then, the Speed Trek is kind of reflecting the, the speed, the journey element of the design itself. So, here's just the corner. This would be, of course, from your southeast corner of the building looking. So, you got the drive-through, the front of the building, and the auto canopy would be to the right, the CFL to the left. Then, just progressing in a counterclockwise around the building, this would be the face that's facing Genoa Road. And then, this would be the face that's facing the main entry to the whole facility. So, that's why we put this logo on there and the mural, and really creating kind of a backdrop, almost a frame effect to, to give that. And hopefully, that will really show how much we are committed to the community. Just coming around to the, now this, you're starting to see the side of the building that's facing the CFLs or to the west. And that really is our entire presentation. Again, we're folks from Am Group and from Heidner are here as well as myself to answer any questions. And I'll just flip it back to, and that's the end of the slideshow. Okay. I'll just go back to the site plan just in case there's any questions.
Alderman Snow?
So, regarding your site plan and genome, you may have more input on this, but I can always tell you that when you've got two vehicles pulling in and out of what, to me, looks like a narrow spot, is there a way to widen that so it's not as narrow?
And where is that, sir? Are you talking?
For the cars.
Okay. So, I mean, this is a 30-foot wide entry, it's a full three lanes, but we, we would like to make it wider, yes.
There's total of upper 35 D and W and then five foot flare, so it'll be 45 feet at the curve, 35 at the sidewalk.
Okay. So, it's nice and decent sized, okay.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, the purpose for today's presentation is just initial to bring the city council, make it aware of something that may be coming to you in the future. For those of you that don't know, I'm probably stealing Gina's thunder a little bit. The parcel we're talking about is not yet annexed to the city of Belvedere. The parcel is actually, if you know where, when you pull out of Walmart and there's that kind of dead-end stub of a road in front of you, this is that location. This location has been prepared or thought of for future annexation for quite some time. The developer before you today does not own the entire segment of property. That owner's looking to annex not just this site, but an entire development, put in a new road, connect Genoa Road to, I believe it's a corporate parkway, Brent? Trip Road. And then, open that up for future retail or similar type developments. So, that would be coming to you in the future, but we thought important to give you guys an idea of what is actually starting to happen and what they're looking at in the near future so that we could address any questions you might have at the front end rather than surprise you with it in a few months, so.
Are we talking about the same street or is it across from I-90?
And I guess this is a generic question for administration or public works or whatever. So, what infrastructure do we already have in that area, or do we not have any infrastructure?
Well, the intersection, there's a stub, stub intersection there off Genoa Road to the west, and that, then it ends. So, through the development, through the annexation and the subdivision process, Crystal Parkway is a roadway that'll be extended from Genoa to Trip, and therefore, it'll complete the extension, and you, you can go there from Genoa all the way up to 20th and East Avenue.
How about drainage, water sewers, all that?
Yeah. It'll be all included in the subdivision portion of the development. Water main is already in, in place. Santeri Sewer is already in place, so there'll just be services and stuff that were, to be worked out now.
And do we?
Potentially need a well or anything in that area, just while we're thinking of it?
No, not with this development. And we've got, we've got a future well site on that section of town that was included in the Farmington subdivision.
It opens up other potential development in that area, too, that are owned by other interests that have been waiting for years to try to do something out there. So, this is a gateway project that will help us going forward with other development. Anybody else have any questions, these gentlemen, this, this evening? Well, hearing none, I want to thank you. We will welcome you to Belvedere. This is something that I think will be a tremendous asset to the community and to the region in general. So, hope to see you back again soon with plans more in place. So, thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight. Travel safe, Lee. Next up, under E, we have Building Department Update.
Okay. So, thank you, Your Honor.
There he is.
For the month of February, we issued 29 building permits, 21 residential, eight commercial for a value of construction just under $350,000 with a permit revenue of just under $7,000. Currently, some projects that are ongoing, we just issued a permit for General Mills for a canteen expansion. We're getting close with the car wash out on, next to Speedway. As you can see, Anderson Funeral Home is, they're in the stage of framing. Brashan Dunno is doing a tenant build out on the first floor that's at Drywall. Cajun Smokehouse out on North State, that's, they're getting footings in and getting ready to do some demo on the interior. There's a, some storage areas being built at 729 Logistics, and Speedway Gas Station is updating their hood. As far as property maintenance, currently have 30 cases open, and I'll entertain any questions.
Snow?
I, I happened to be by the funeral home and noticed that it looks like, is there separate sections of the building that require fire-rated plywood going up the middle so they, wherever the incinerary device is going to go, that?
That'll be sprinkled.
Okay. Because I, like I said, it looked like they were putting up fire-rated plywood in two distinct sections, so.
Yeah. There's a, whenever they hit a certain square footage, they have to rate that area or sprinkler it, and they're fire rating that area, and then the incinerator area will be sprinkled.
Additional questions for the Director? Hearing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. That brings us to item enough to three, Public Works Unfinished Business, and we will leave the stormwater utility implementation facing on the table where it has been for several months. There has never, we have never gotten to the point of having the public presentations on this item, let alone considering this to be some kind of a tax. So, that will come in the future. Those discussions will be brought forth in the future. It's considered to be another piece of trying to control the $42 million stormwater challenge that we have on the south side of the town to keep flooding out of people's houses and neighborhoods. Okay. Under number four, Public Works, we'll have a Public Works update on Item A. Director Anderson, please proceed.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of things to update council on. Waste water treatment plant, we have completed the second year of COMED's Waste Water Strategic Energy Management Program. So far, since we began that program in 2019, we are reducing our electrical consumption by 11%. Our incentive check for the 2020 year will be $2,245, and that program has been extended for calendar year 2021 as well. So, there's, they've added one year onto the program. Originally, it was contemplated to be two-year program, and it's now a three-year program. 407 West Madison Street, as you know, the city acquired that property, and the existing house that was there has been demolished. Direction from council was to seek out interest from the adjoining property owners. We have made contact with both the adjacent property owners at 405 West Madison on the east and 415 West Madison on the west. Both owners said that they would get back to me whether they are interested in purchasing the property or not. Note that all the adjacent properties are, are not owner occupied. They're all rental units at this time. So, once I hear back from, from both those property owners, I'll be back to council with that information. Any questions?
Snow?
So, if somebody took the 407, the empty lot, and decided to build a new structure, would they have to pay the connection fees? Has that already been covered because it's not part of, it's already got service there?
Correct. Because there was an existing facility there, then, then they would not have to pay the connection fees unless for some reason they required a larger meter than what was already there, which I wouldn't foresee, just a standard residential location. So, the connection fees would not be charged.
Additional questions for the Director? Okay. Moving on.
Next up, we've got the 2021 sidewalk bids for this year. We received five bids, contractors. I would recommend the approval of the low bid from Globe Construction, the amount of $147,620 for the city's annual sidewalk program. Unit prices are $8.15 a square foot for removal replacement of four-inch sidewalk and $7.20 a square foot for removal replacement of six-inch sidewalk. This work will be paid for from line item 0153106003 and line item 4151107900.
We have a motion to approve, please. Motion by Porter, second by Snow. Questions or further comments concerning, yes, Alderman. Stevens?
Who got the bid last year?
Same contractor.
Please proceed.
Now, when I did see this Global's work, they tore the stuff out, and they didn't put any gravel or anything down where it'd been tore out, the, the ones that I had seen.
Spec requires compacted, free vegetation, does not require a stone aggregate base.
Because when Mr. Byers, I mean, Randy Byers did it, he was putting down stone and stuff, so that might be the big difference. And personally, I'd rather see a local guy get the contract than someone out of Edison.
We have the option, if it is a local contractor, I believe that if it's within 10% of the low bid, is that something that, I was just told, or is that in fact something we can do? City Attorney?
No. I think that's only when we're in high, when our unemployment is over a certain percentage, that, then we have the, the ability to do that, I think.
Okay. In your experience, Director Anderson, is there a quality difference in having the stone base and having the compacted earth base?
As long as it's compacted, and except free vegetation, then stone is not necessarily required. It's up to the individual contractor whether, whether they want to use it or not. But as long as, like I said, as long as it's compacted, free vegetation, that's what the requirement is for the standard. Globe Construction, this would be the, this will be the third year they've had the contract actually the last two years.
Have we had any? Have we had any problems whatsoever with quality of their work when it's finished?
No, we have not.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, the motion on the floor, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is approved, brings us to item C.
Next up is our landscape maintenance bids. Received two bids this year for our 2021 program. Area Service, twenty-three thousand four hundred and four dollars and ninety-eight cents. Lawn Care by Walter, twenty-three thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. I would recommend approval of the low bid from Area Services in the amount of twenty-three thousand four hundred and four dollars and ninety-eight cents for the 2021 Landscape Maintenance Program. This work will be paid for from Street Department line item zero one five three ten six zero zero two and zero one five three ten sixty-eight twenty-six.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Arivolo, may I have a second, please, second by Flurry. Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman, Flurry.
What, what exactly maintenance does this take care of?
Takes care of the streetscape areas downtown, is be the primary areas, as well as the, the different landscape areas that we have in the municipal parking lots, the ten municipal parking lots, as well as Appleton Road, on the reverse curve on Appleton by Lincoln. And I believe also they're welcome the Belvidere signs on the outskirts of town, coming into town as well.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us then to item D.
Item D is our tree program for 2021, we received three bids. I would recommend approval of the low bid from Tree Care Enterprises in the amount of fifty-one thousand six hundred dollars for tree work from May one, 2021 to April thirtieth, 2022. This work will be paid for from forestry funds.
Motion, so I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Snow, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Arivolo. Questions or comments, Alderman, Porter?
Okay, I guess it'd be for Becky, I noticed that this is eleven thousand six hundred dollars over our budget for this program. How, how are we gonna reconcile that?
Sure, typically what we will do is we'll keep, we'll make sure that it stays within our budget. If we have emergency storm damage or so forth, it's gonna increase the cost, then we'd advise council as such.
Does that answer your question, Alderman Porter?
Well, well, this is over budget though, is what I'm saying, it's over our forty thousand dollar budget.
Is he, is he confused with the forestry budget?
No, the forest, forestry budget, we've got forty thousand dollar budgeted, so what I'm saying is we will stay within that forty thousand dollar budget. This was a plug number that we put in for quantity, estimated quantity. So as the tree work progresses, barring any storm damage work that has to be done, the unanticipated costs, we should be able to stay underneath that forty thousand dollar number.
I think for clarification, let's call this the forestry program then, is it, that's how it's described in the budget, isn't it? Yes, Alderman, Snow?
So Brent, how often do we not, how often do we wind up going over the budgeted amount?
Every year.
We've had a few years where it, where it did go over, but that's mostly when we were removing so many of the trees because of the Emerald Ash bore. It's, yes, we were at one point, I think it was like a hundred and twenty thousand a year we were spending on this program, and now we're back down to, to the normal forty thousand.
We had a, we had a high in FY sixteen of a hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred and eighty. Actual FY twenty, right now, we're at thirty thousand six ninety-four. FY nineteen, we were at forty-three thousand eight seventy.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Brings us to item E.
Item E is mowing program for this year. We only received one bid this year from Lawn Care by Walter. There's, there's three different, the mowing is broken down into three components, I need a motion for each. First one being approval of a little bit from Lawn Care by Walter in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars per mowing for the mowing of the water department sites. This work will be paid for from Water Department line item sixty-one five eight ten sixty-fourty.
Second. Porter. Questions or comments, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
Second one would be the approval of a little bit from Lawn Care by Walter in the amount of seven hundred and twenty dollars per mowing for the mowing of the public works sites. This work will be paid for from Street Department line item zero one five three ten six zero zero two.
Motion approved. Flurry, second, Porter, questions or comments for the discussion, Snow?
So, along with the previous one, these numbers look like they jumped up quite a bit in the overall scheme of things. So, any rationale on their part or your part, or any speculation?
I can tell you, on the Public Works, we did add a couple of spots, newly acquired addition to parking lot number seven. We'll have some additional turf area down by the river, adjacent to the river, when that work is all finished. So that's, that was included, as well as there was one other spot, and it escapes me now what we added. So we did add a little bit of, of quantity to that one. The fact that we only got one bid would also be an indication you don't have anything else to compare to. However, for the most part, I think these are basically in line with what we're seeing price-wise.
Alderman Stevens?
How many Lawn Care by Walters are there? This one's in Cherry Valley and the last one on the landscape is Grays Lake, Illinois.
Well, that's a, that's a cut and paste error, error on that one, I apologize. There's just one, and he's in Rockford.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Nope, motion is approved unanimously, brings us to.
The final one then would be the approval of a little bit from Lawn Care by Walter in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five dollars per mowing for the Farmington Ponds. This work will be paid for from the Farmington Pond Maintenance Fund.
I have a motion to approve, please. Snow, second, or Arivolo, questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, brings us to item F.
Item F in your packets, a memo with the proposed street overlays for this coming summer construction season. Alderman, please review those, take a look at those. If you have any questions, concerns, or changes, please advise. Be looking for a motion to forward this probably at our next committee meeting. I wanted to get this out in front of you now, so you had a chance to review it before we take final action on it.
Okay, so this was just an FYI, then we'll move on. Under other, we have a resolution authorizing certain annual parades for 2020. I have a motion to approve the parade roster.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Arivolo, second.
I'll second that.
Second by Stevens. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Resolution is approved unanimously, and a side note to this, I had a fairly in-depth conversation with the Health Department today on the potential for us being able to have Heritage Days. And as we are approaching Level Five, and we're trending well in that direction, it will just really depend on how well we do the next few weeks, whether or not we're gonna be able to be in a position to have Heritage Days. And so I will start reaching out and talking to some of the folks that help support that effort every year and we'll try to get that going. Next item up is the financial year twenty-two budget and discussion. Ms. Tobin, you have the floor.
So I have nothing specific for tonight, generally at this time in the process, I can take questions. If there's anything specific that you wanted to discuss tonight, or for me to pull up, this is a good time to do it. Next week, at your Monday meeting, you will see the first reading of the budget ordinance. Not to say you can't change it after that, 'cause obviously two weeks from tonight, we can have more discussion and make changes, but it does help me as I work on the ordinance this week. If, if there's any discussion tonight, or if you know of any changes that you wanted to make, it does help. So if there's anything you want me specifically to pull up, or you want to discuss, we can do that.
Questions or comments from Ms. Tobin? Yes, Alderman, Arivolo?
Were you able to contact the shopper, see if they'll help us for the, to remind the elder, for the people can remind the elderly, they need help, the elderly to shovel snow?
I have talked to Matt, I did not talk to him specifically about that, but, but I can. I have a feeling that they're, they're pretty good about that stuff, but I will.
I know, if not just perfect time to increase at least the publication part of our budget.
The publication, okay.
Anybody else tonight? Okay, moving on, under item C, the police request to hire an entry-level police officer. Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you will turn to the memo contained in your packets, the Belvidere Police Department are requesting authorization to hire an entry-level police officer. Since the passing of the COSAP grant, intergovernmental agreement, the next step would be to request to hire the officer who's funded by the grant and responsible for replacing the officer who will be assigned to the grant position. I would request a motion to authorize the Belvidere Police Department to hire an entry-level police officer to fill the COSAP grant position.
I have a motion of that effect. Flurry, second, by Snow. Questions or comments, further discussion? Alderman Stevens?
When would this gentleman or lady go to start classes? And how long would they last?
Which classes are you referring to, Alderman Stevens?
Uh, when they end up? When they end up going off to police academy?
That date is yet to be determined, we're still on several waiting lists and waiting to hear back.
Alderman Porter?
Okay, so, I just want to make a few comments here. I have to tell you that, since I've been on the city council, this is probably one of the most difficult decisions I've had to make on the council and I've seriously actually have lost sleep over this, this decision here, as far as the COSAP. I know the, the, we voted for it a couple of weeks ago, or last week, whenever that was. I would have liked to have heard from some of the people, we had a lot of people here, like the state's attorney and the sheriff and elected officials, I would have liked to have heard a little bit more from them as elected officials on the record, you know, saying that this is actually a good idea for the taxpayers, so, just a comment there. One thing I wanted to ask Becky was, can you go into a little more detail on these, this, um, the pay, pay and benefits on this? 'Cause there was some question on whether the grant was actually gonna cover everything. So I would like to know if, if it is actually gonna cover everything, like pension and the whole shot.
So the grant included the starting wage and benefits for a new officer, not the average. So that was, that was the discussion, whether it was the average salary or of a new officer. And, and for the grant, it was for a brand-new officer. So it'll pay the salary and benefits of the, the new officer that, that the chief is talking about right now. And the grant will have to cover it, I mean, I think they have it budgeted where the grant will cover it.
And that's for the full three years or six years, as, yes, do you?
The full three years, correct. As we've done this in the past, and I'm not sure, I did not write this grant, so this is not mine specifically, but in the past, when we do grants where it's salary reimbursement, we actually have to submit payrolls that specifically show what the pay was, what the benefits were, and what we're asking for reimbursement for. So, if that's the case, then we would be getting every single dollar back that's, that's part of those payrolls, minus the overtime, obviously, I think that was the one that was in question, but.
Okay, thanks. Chief, this is for you, I guess, do you have any statistics of, or are there any other villages like Rockford in the local area that do have this type of officer? And I'd like to just know if, if this is actually a good idea and if it's working in other places.
I don't have any local statistics to compare. As I had stated, and I will give Amanda an opportunity to provide any additional information, but according to the information that I have and provided last week, there are numerous communities that do the law enforcement assisted diversion programs, and I will find the statistics in terms of the recidivism and what type of success that these programs have had. Diversion essentially is locating, identifying, and intervening these high-risk clients and then trying to provide them the, the resources that they need to take them from the path that they're on and divert them away from substance abuse disorders. But let me find what I had. So, and part of what I had brought before the council last week, just generally speaking, four evaluations of the LEED program, which is law enforcement assisted diversion, has shown positive initial results, research found statistically significant differences in recidivism. And just in case, essentially that's repeat offenders. Between LEED participants, so people that participate in the program, and a comparison group of people that don't. LEED participants had a sixty percent lower likelihood of arrest at six months than the comparison group that did not participate in the program. LEAD participants had a sixty percent lower likelihood of arrest at six months than the comparison group that did not participate in the program itself. After about four years, LEAD participants were fifty-eight percent less likely to be arrested compared to the control group. So over half were less likely to be arrested than those that did not participate in this type of group. On average, LEAD participants had 1.4 fewer jail bookings per year, spent thirty-nine fewer days in jail per year, and had eighty-seven percent lower odds of at least one period of incarceration after entry into the program. So just generally speaking, that's the success that many programs have seen from these types of LEAD diversion programs. As far as Rockford, to my knowledge, I haven't heard where Rockford participates in a grant similar to this, but I, without asking them specifically, I couldn't say for sure.
Anybody else? Do you have more?
Yeah, one other question. I guess I'm still not understanding the concept of having an officer as a middleman, you know, the experienced officer. I guess I'm still thinking that every officer should be able to get the training to do the intervention as far as, you know, talking to their supervisor if they have a drug arrest, or, you know, drug confrontation. And then that supervisor making the, the recommendation to the Health Department. I guess I'm still not really understanding that.
Yeah, and each officer will be indirectly participating in this program. However, one, the grant was written specifically for a police officer to participate full-time, dedicated to the program, the grant program. Two, this will allow a particular officer to work with the other grant program participants, and they're able to communicate and effectively centralize the information that they obtain. The officer is going to be able to assist the social workers, Rosecrants, and the other program participants when they do go out in the field. Because the idea is, the officer, and that's why we kind of need a veteran officer, is going to be somebody that is familiar with these high-risk individuals, or they're going to be referred by the officers that work night shift, or through the county, so on and so forth. So they'll be able to have that information to then pass on to the Health Department, the social workers, so on and so forth.
Just to refresh my memory, the orient, the origin, origin of this grant, where are these monies coming from specifically?
Department of Justice.
Okay, so it's federal, right?
Correct.
So, one way to look at this, and I didn't know if there was a state component too, is we're getting back some of our federal tax money to help us fund a program that is to benefit of the community with folks that have problems with drugs. The more I thought about that, I thought, well, that's all right, you know, for change, we're getting money back from federal government.
Yeah, and I, I don't think anybody would doubt the statistics that show that there has been an increase in the opioid abuse issue that is not only happening here locally, but nationally. And, you know, we have a narcotics unit that addresses the enforcement side of what we're trying to accomplish. This is just one more way to address it from another angle, to try and prevent those persons from becoming abusers or continue to abuse substances.
So, go ahead.
Well, I don't want you to get the wrong idea. I mean, I'm, I'm for helping people and trying to give them the help they need and everything. It's, I'm not against the program, and my main concern is that somehow that the taxpayer is gonna end up paying, you know, in the end on this, you know, quite a bit of money for that, the benefits and such.
Well, and to kind of address one of your previous statements regarding the other stakeholders and wanting to hear them speak, the reason why they were here the other night is because a majority, if not all, are the hard part of that behavioral task force that determined that an officer was an essential component for the next step of this grant process. So each and every one of them, even though you may not have necessarily heard from, from them, were here in support of this grant. And the reason why, you know, Amanda and I had asked them here is to answer any questions that anybody may have had of any of the grant participants. So maybe they could have provided some of that, that information at that time.
Chief Woody.
Yes? Go ahead, Alderman Frank.
Hi, Chief Woody. No, this is Amanda, mail from the...
Oh, hi Amanda, go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, I just, I was just taking a few notes. These are great questions. If I may, I can address even, in addition to what the chief has mentioned on a couple of these points, if that's appropriate at this time.
Yes, with a great Amanda. If you could speak up a little bit, though, we're having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry, is this better?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, so to the question about the budget, Becky did a great job of answering. We would indeed ask for payroll information in order to submit for the reimbursement. The grant does cover FIC and IMRF and benefits for this officer for the full three years. All of that is included, that was written in. Any budgetary items that the police department requested for this officer were included in the grant, so we wanted to make sure that it was as comprehensive as possible. In terms of addressing sort of the, the level of crisis that, that we find ourselves in with the opioid epidemic, and it's nothing new to Belvidere Boom County, I, I don't know if you're all aware, but for the last two calendar years, the average life expectancy of a US resident has gone down, and that is directly attributed to the opioid crisis. Actually, in the last two years, opioid-associated deaths have been the leading cause above car accidents and violent crimes, and any other, you know, forms of cancer, heart disease, diabetes, the leading cause of death in individuals under the age of fifty. So that's not only, you know, not good for the individual and their family, but that's expensive for the community, right? Whether you're talking about jail costs, you're talking about behavioral health services, you're talking about medical costs, you're talking about repeat trips to the emergency room. A lot of the folks that we plan to work with to divert from the criminal justice system, not only repeat time in our jail and repeat time in contact with law enforcement officers, but they repeat time in the emergency room, which comes out of our tax dollars when we pay our insurance premiums every year. It's very, very expensive. Folks end up in the ER for opioid overdoses and revivals that are not necessary if we can prevent those. The model that we have designed this program after, and I did mention this last week, but I'd be happy to elaborate further, is twofold. It's based on the sequential intercept map that the Behavioral Health Task Force completed in 2018, which had significant city participants in organizing where we felt there were gaps in the community as far as providing services. And so this was a direct result of the gap analysis that the task force put together in 2018. This was the second part of the two grants that we wrote for, the one that we received in 2019, and then the one we've just recently received in the fall of 2020. The other piece of it that I think is important to note is that the model that we are building in Belvidere Boom County is not unique. It's not a pilot program, it's not new. We're not reinventing the wheel. We're actually taking evidence-based programs that have been built all across the country. The national training that I attended last year on behalf of the task force, many of the sessions I went to were led by local municipal law enforcement officers that have established CLEO programs, and they are finding that they are reducing recidivism anywhere from fifty to seventy-five percent in their respective communities. They are able to now capture the amount of money saved because their programs have been running for many, many years now. Some of these programs have been going for close to a decade. So we're modeling our program after programs that have been successful in other states, and also in communities that are similar in size and demographics to our community. We are currently, as I mentioned last week, working as a mentee under a mentorship program that is of no cost to the county or the city with Butler County, located in Kentucky. They have a very small community program similar to this, and they have seen incredible successes by having a CLEO on the street to not only reduce recidivism, but reduce time in jail, reduce overdose rates and deaths. So we're modeling our program after programs that have worked in rural communities, in communities of our size, and are using best practice, evidence-based models. So we're taking templates that have worked elsewhere and implementing them here locally. So it was part of our gap analysis that we did in 2018, part of our long-term plan for building this system in the community, but it's also being based directly on law enforcement-led program techniques that are showing statistically significant outcomes.
Any additional questions and comments? Hearing not all those in favor approval, to authorize the Belvidere Police Department to hire an entry-level police officer to fill the COSAP grant position, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Brereton.
No.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Nay.
I'm sorry. No.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
No.
Six in favor?
Motion is...
I did not. Okay. Ratcliffe.
Aye.
So six in favor, motion passes. Thank you. Last item on the agenda this evening is the business registration. And prefacing our discussion on said subject, I have a few remarks I'd like to make. The purpose of the business registration license was to create a means of reducing criminal and nefarious conduct such as prostitution. We were successful in that effort, and we rid the city of the massage parlors. The goal appears to have been met for the time being. Some members of the City Council have called for stricter enforcement of the business registration license ordinance, even against businesses which are otherwise upstanding businesses, and right now which are struggling to survive. While a registration scheme has some merit, the idea of imposing fines or other penalties on otherwise law-abiding businesses for simply failing to register with a city clerk is not acceptable. The registration scheme is an aid to law enforcement, the fire department, and the city administration in helping curtail illegal, illegal activity and providing points of contact for first responders in emergency situations. However, imposing fines or penalties on the good honest businesses of this community for the sins of the few as was never intended to occur, has not occurred under this administration, and is not a position that I can support. Therefore, I recommend repealing the business registration ordinance. I further recommend revisiting alternative methods of reaching the original goals of the ordinance in a manner less imposing on the law-abiding businesses of this community in the future. And as you recall, when we discussed this, some of our leading businesses came in here, and, and they, they were annoyed and angry about having more restrictions or more questions placed upon them operating. As it, as we have not enforced this, we have found that that goes along just pretty much fine. And there's no reason to fine somebody because they didn't get a license. We have what, two hundred?
We have over two hundred, about two hundred and forty-six.
So we have a, a majority of the city businesses which, which have voluntarily done this. I think continuing in that vein is the intelligent and wise thing to do, and I don't think we need an ordinance on the books that contains a punitive section for not registering. So questions and comments? Alderman, Stevens?
The very first version we seen of this was as little as hearsay. We were gonna be able to go after somebody and close them down for thirty days until a hearing. That's exactly what I objected to then. And anything that's even like that, that was the very first version we got. And the only one that was gonna be on the committee to do it was the mayor, judge, jury, and executioner. That was the very first version.
That was the first blush that was, that was brought by the city attorney for discussion. You're correct. And? Alderman, Porter?
Well, just to make sure that my comments last week weren't misconstrued, I was not in any way suggesting that we fine the businesses that are not complying, just for non-compliance. And also, you had made a comment, or somebody had made a comment, I think it was Mr. Mayor, or maybe Attorney Drell, that we didn't actually have to use the business registration license to take care of the massage parlors when this happened, because they voluntarily gave up the, the license. But I guess my point was that we, I felt that we were opening up the city to a major lawsuit if we don't have everybody on board, you know, and then we use it for the purposes that it was intended for, which I'm still in favor of, you know, if, if we could get everybody on board. But I, I just think that that's gonna open up a major lawsuit if we, you know, fines somebody and then don't fine the other people that are not in compliance.
Alderman, Snow.
And I guess I'd like clarity. One of your comments that you just made was talking about repealing. Is that talking about repealing the entire ordinance?
Yes.
Or just repealing any portion that it has impunitive?
This is a discussion, so if, if we could also consider just repealing the punitive part of, of the ordinance. Attorney Drell, would you want to comment on that?
I'm forgetting, I'm collecting my thoughts. With respect to repealing a portion of the ordinance, the problem you run into is that there's no teeth to back up requiring them to get a business registration in the first place. Then there's no way of preventing somebody saying, well, I'm not required to get one because make me. I have no way to make them, might as well not even be on the books. Virtually, any ordinance that you adopt, when I say you, I mean the City Council is a generic term, any ordinance you adopt that regulates behavior, not talking about budgets or buying land, but ordinance that regulates behavior, you shall drive at this speed. You shall ensure that you have working fire, fire detectors in your residential buildings and in your rental buildings. You shall pay your taxes on time. Every single one of those has a penalty component to it to cover the case where the person or the entity that doesn't want to comply with it just refuses to. Because absent that penalty provision, it becomes, as the mayor indicated, going towards a voluntary program, if that makes any sense. And a voluntary program is what the city had for decades before we adopted this program. And, and businesses would come in, say, how do I register? We'd have a form, they'd register that information available to fire and police departments, but there was no mandate that they do that. So the only way, if you want to mandate something, it's no different than being a mom or dad. It has to be backed up by the possibility of some kind of punishment if they refuse to comply.
So, there is nothing to say that we cannot alter our ordinance to being just a voluntary ordinance, correct? The case in point here was, there was a promise made, and I made that promise to the community that I would get rid of the massage parlors, which I did. And now we haven't had that problem, and until that problem crops up again, we may have to, or whoever's in this chair in the future may have to revisit this to make sure that we have the ability to do that. It was forty years, you know, and it was an acceptable part of our community. And the reason that we looked at it a different way was because of human trafficking and drugs. And that is a significant problem in this country now. They find, in the port cities like Houston and LA, they find containers full of Chinese girls on a regular basis that are put in a container and shipped on a ship here, and then are fed out into various nefarious enterprises. There's no place in the world for that today. And we were fortunate here that we, they all started to fold up pretty quick. We, it wasn't a walk in the park, it took a while, but we got where we needed to get. So, you know, I don't have a problem with having a voluntary business registration ask in the community, and I'd like to hear your opinion on that. Snow?
So I get the idea of the voluntary thing, but again, that doesn't stop the issue of having somebody not participate. The punitive portion is interesting in the fact that, right now, technically, we can, our generic fine is a hundred dollars per day per occurrence. But could that, in this case, be stipulated in the ordinance to just be a dollar per... But could that, in this case, be stipulated in the ordinance to just be a dollar per day, just so you have something there in order to enforce? And then I'd also like to hear from the police chief if possible.
To start that process, I have said, from the time that this was first introduced to the council, I've said it recently, over the last few months, the business registration scheme is not foolproof, is one arrow in the quiver to try and get a handle on illicit activity within the city of Belvedere, at least coming out of retail establishments or service establishments. The penalties are not $100 per day. It depends on the level of the violation. Failure to get the license in the first place currently is the $100 per day. The operation with a license suspended, let's say they're found before the commission that we've created, then found have engaged in illegal activities and the license is suspended, that's $500 per day plus court costs. Yes, you can set that per day amount literally at anything you wish to, but for it to be a quiver, or an arrow in the quiver, if somebody says, "Well, fine, they cashed me for 30 days' worth, what's 30 bucks?" It's not much of a deterrent to try and get them to get the license in the first place. So, you have to have that balancing, that's really a council decision, and that was made years and years ago to set the default fine, which is actually $95 now, not 100. But again, it's just one arrow in the quiver. And we've only invoked it really during one period since it's been adopted. Three of the establishments did come in for hearings and rather than go through a hearing, they did in fact turn in their licenses. The other one didn't have a license and I had to jump through that, we went through this, amended it recently. I had to wait the 60 days and they finally turned it in when, actually they didn't turn in, they never got it, but they shut down before we could bring them into the hearings. So, whether or not that caused them to do it or the acting, the active criminal investigations that were going on at the time, I don't know.
Alderman, Snow?
So, I'm going to tie this into the aspect of driving on a revoked or suspended license. If you have no license, as soon as you're given a ticket for it, my understanding is that now acts as your license and it's immediately suspended at that point. So, any driving on it becomes your second big issue to deal with. Do we have that? So, in fact, if you had a business who refused to register and you fined them the dollar, that immediately registers them, the commission says you're in violation and then you can start the $500 per day violation. Just tossing that out there. And if we could, can we get clarity on who exactly the commission consists of at this point besides the mayor? Because I think it was like the two senior aldermen, but I couldn't honestly tell you.
It is the mayor and the two most senior aldermen, determined by total years of service of the alderman.
Talking about electoral commission, there was a big question about which one got to serve, so it's total years of service. And in the absence of the mayor, then the top three with the most senior serving as the chairman.
So, it boils down to this. If we're going to have the ordinance and not enforce it, then why have it? Or if we're going to have the ordinance, then we need to enforce it? And I think it's, for businesses that don't want to do this, that are upstanding businesses, it's ridiculous to me to do it at this point. If we could rewrite an ordinance that would specifically target criminal activity, period, that might be another option. Chief, what do you think about all of this?
When we were tasked with looking at the activity in some of these massage parlors, we concluded fairly quickly that being able to identify criminal offenses that took place inside were going to be somewhat difficult. And after the investigations took place, we concluded that, you know, some weren't necessarily quite as effective as we had hoped because of the nature of the people that they have working for these types of establishments. And we were looking at a city level at different ways of addressing some of the establishments that were in business. And business registration was one of them where if you could regulate which businesses were able to get registrations, that maybe you could identify some of these places before they ever took hold within the city. That was one of the approaches we took. There were other things that we had discussed like nuisance property ordinances. And, you know, you look at different offenses for businesses that commit these offenses, put them on notice, and then you have some sort of enforcement penalties that way as well. It was determined at a council level that business registrations were more appropriate route to take. And ultimately, my opinion, from a law enforcement perspective, the more tools that we can have to prevent these types of establishments from taking foothold within our city, the better off we're going to be. Now, I understand there's ramifications well beyond the isolated incident that we're trying to target and that's at the heart of the discussion today. But, you know, at the crux of the law enforcement perspective, the more tools that we can have, the better off we are going to be in being successful in keeping these types of businesses from being in Belvedere.
The chief mentioned the concept of a nuisance establishment. That's actually based on something that he and Deputy Chief Wallace brought to my attention 10, 12 years ago, with respect to drug use and drug houses. There is a provision in the state statute that authorized the state's attorney, not the city, to go to court when a house has been used and has proven to have been used on multiple occasions in drug activities. In that case, the court is allowed to, I haven't looked at this in 10 years, but I believe enjoying the use of that house for a period of time.
That was one of the remedies.
One of the remedies. One of the reasons we didn't go that route for this, but something we could look at perhaps in the future, is you had to go to court and prove to court that the property is being used in those drug activities, which basically means show them convictions of the drug offenses, which requires a much higher burden of proof than a civil action, which is what we have here if we do it this route. And that higher burden of proof is what requires the police officer literally to go in there undercover and try and get, try and catch these people and their activities. That's one thing we can look at doing though, and using our home rule powers to attach it to that method. One of the things that was discussed back in the day was something that I've drafted multiple times before the state adopted the state licensing for masseuses. And now, and city Belvedere actually had an ordinance like this on the books at one time, massage parlor ordinance. You don't regulate all businesses, you regulate massage parlors, no different than we regulate a bowling alley or...
Gaming parlor.
Gaming parlor. The negative to that I put forth at that point, because it already happened. We had one massage parlor say, "We don't do massages, we do lingerie modeling." That happened in Los Park, actually. Or, "We don't do massages, we do aromatic relaxation techniques." They listen to smell candles while they're in the room. So, they found a way around that one by simply claiming not to do massages, they didn't need to massage parlor license. So, that was one of the reasons why we went for the all-encompassing, let's just get one big ordinance out there and make them get it. And then if we find out by preponderance of the evidence that they have engaged in illegal activity, then our commission could revoke that license. But again, it's an arrow in the quiver, it's not said the be-all or end-all. No matter what it comes down to, you need evidence of the illegal activity. The police department's going to be the ones that have to go out there and get it, because I'm certainly not. And the only question comes down to, do you prove it beyond a reasonable doubt in criminal court, or preponderance of the evidence, and our commission ultimately, if it's on appeal, to the circuit court?
Let me ask this question. How many years has it been now that we've had this in effect and we're not enforcing it, we're doing it on a voluntary basis?
Five?
The ordinance was adopted in 2017, July of 2017.
Four years. Not quite four years. So, there are ramifications for having an ordinance on the books that has contingency, enforcement, fines, and we're not enforcing it. So, does that mean realistically that if someone else came in to start the massage parlor business and we use this against them, that they would have a viable defense in saying we don't enforce it across the breadth of the community appropriately?
The city always has discretion when to enforce an ordinance or not, just like a police officer has discretion whether to or not to issue a citation for speeding when they pull somebody over. They might decide that that was worth just a warning. So, to that extent, no, there's no liability for not enforcing against specific individuals, but enforcing against others. Where you might get into an issue is if you could show some kind of pattern based on race, ethnicity, nationality, things along, you know, the usual discriminatory categories. You could also run into, don't get me wrong, you hear the defense all the time in court, "Well, I've never heard anybody else getting caught for this one." And that's not actually defense to the criminal action in court, or in this case, the civil action court, that is not a defense they can use. If they can show that it's being used in a discriminatory manner, again, against race, sex, sexual orientation, nationality, religion, those kinds of things, then yeah, we would face liability, but obviously we're not doing that, nor have we ever done that.
So, leading up to tonight's discussion, there was a storm brewing here with the council members, because there were those council members that said, "We're going to, we need to enforce it against everybody." And there were council members who thought it was, "We don't need to enforce it." You know, my position is, if it's really going to become an issue that the council's going to end up enforcing this all the time, I think it creates a problem, particularly right now, at this point in time in our history and with what we're facing with the businesses in this community, that I just don't think it's the right thing to do. If we can leave it the way it is and everybody can walk away from this saying, "Okay, we still have it if we need it, but we don't have to enforce it and we're not going to press to enforce it," then we can leave it just like it is. But I was getting the feeling that there were individuals in the council that wanted it one way or the other, and so hence the discussion tonight. If it's got to be one way or the other, I would rather repeal it than start enforcing against businesses who are in good standing, who have done nothing wrong, who do not need to be dragged into something like this for no good reason. Alderman, Snow?
And I was never a big fan of the business registration to speak of in general, so when you said repeal, that kind of caught my ear, but I get the idea of the enforcement end of things. And I think one of the problems that you were feeling, in my opinion, was the fact that people or businesses that were receiving assistance, fundage, or anything from the city, that they needed to step up and be registered, because you had numerous people who were potentially in the grant money that was distributed who hadn't currently been registered, things like that. Other things are, anybody who comes in for special use in zoning that falls within the district, which is everybody, they should also be registered. And I guess one of the other things too would be like facade grant programs that occur, that's again, money, all those people need to participate in this scheme. I think that alleviates some of the questions that, you know, somebody would bring up about, you know, "Well, this person's getting, you know, $100, $300 for, you know, something from the city in that regard, but they're not even registered." So, I think if we try to head that off, we're not going to increase our numbers substantially by doing that, but at least we know upfront that when that question comes up, we can say, yes, they are participating in the registration. And I don't know that, right now, it's currently supposed to be a yearly renewal?
It is.
And you send out notices and most people reply back?
Yes, and then in June, the end of June, we send out second notices.
And, and do you, is that, in your opinion, worthy of administration-wise doing, other than the fact that you know who's currently there or not there, as opposed to units that change hands and go from one business to another?
I don't know if a yearly thing is necessary, but...
The only purpose for the yearly is because people do move in and out, especially along State Street, and when a new one moves in, we may not know about, but more importantly, when somebody moves out, we may not know about it. By requiring the annual registration, it was an easier way to keep track of that, but that's the only reason for the annual registration. You could do a one-time registration if you wanted to, but again, it creates that, all right, we may not know when people are leaving or coming in. But as it is, we may not know either until they don't reply.
The administration part would be a lot easier if just you got the licensing one time, and then if your business was sold or whatever, then the new owners could...
Could or should register, so...
I think it's entirely possible to rewrite it so that something, if they're receiving funding from the city for a project or something like that, we require as part of that recipient...
You don't even need to do it, it's already required. And I think, I don't want to speak for it, but the clerk will tell you that with virtually everything where they're going to get something from the city when they come in for it, the clerk hands them the registration, they fill it out right in front of her.
So, do we have a problem here? I mean, it's nice that we can leave something on the books that would give us, you know, some muscle when we needed it. But this discussion seems to get a life of its own when we're not really having a problem with it, you know? And I kind of got the feeling we had to go one way or the other, and if the one way we're going to go, I just, I just don't want to penalize, you saw the folks that came in here that are leading business people, that were really upset about doing this. You know, most of that information, quite frankly, you can find them done in Brad, that was name, address, you know, who the business belongs to, how many employees they have there, what the average sales volume or product production volume is of their business. So, is this something we're fussing about that we don't need to fuss about? We just leave it as it is? Before we started voting on stuff, I wanted to get here that, you know, if this is, we're just going to leave it as it is, we'll leave it as it is. Alderman, Porter?
Well, I guess I would say that I don't see why a legitimate business would have any problem with it, but I may be wrong about that. I would think that they would be okay with just signing up for it.
It's the same thing as raising any tax, any amount ever with some people. They don't want to pay one penny more of any kind of tax, ever. And the idea is, again, it's a very simple thing. Tax money goes directly back to the citizens of the community and is spent on the community, whether it's paving streets or whatever the expenses are, tax money doesn't disappear into a hole in the ground. And the situation is, when we have projects, the tax money pays for the completion of the projects. Tax monies are how cities operate. We're not allowed to be in business ourselves for profit. There are some cities who are, and then you can almost consider something like water and sewer, but it's not. It's providing a service to the community at large. So, you know, I think in the instance where somebody is coming in for funding for something or so it allows them to make money, then I'm sure that I would fill it out, I mean, as a business person. So, again, I guess it comes down to, do we really have a problem or not? Do we want to rewrite this thing? And if so, what I would recommend if we're going to do that is everybody write down their ideas and give them to the city attorney and then he can look through them. That was a pretty good ordinance that he wrote the first time, I thought.
And Mr. Mayor answered Alderman Porter's question. There are a lot of people that look at government and say, if the government says that they're here to help, watch out. There's a lot of people that look at government and say, "You know what? I don't want the government in my backseat, I don't want them watching what I'm doing, I don't want them in my pocket." And those are good, upstanding, honest people, just because... Just because somebody doesn't want to give information to the government, doesn't mean they're trying to hide something. It just means that they wanna keep their own personal information to themselves. So I would not look at somebody that does not wanna register as trying to hide something. It just means they don't wanna register, and that's all it means.
So I would pose, I would pose a question to the clerk, again, you know, is this something you would see that we could repeal the portion about yearly registration? And that wouldn't, that would be a better scenario for your office as far as running and keeping track of stuff?
Well, during COVID, it was especially hard to get people to apply this year, a lot of people weren't open. I don't know if, yeah, I don't think a yearly thing is the way to go.
So in that regards, I would be amenable, I don't know about everybody else and we could take a straw poll about repealing that portion of the yearly portion.
How's everybody feel about that? Flurry?
Just one thing to add, I mean, the reason it sounds like the business registration was put in the first place was to get rid of the massage parlors, which have been gone away. Was never intended to punish businesses that are already established. So I know that you mentioned some alternative methods of doing this. However, it seemed like the one that you chose would be the most broad as opposed to if you just said, no massage parlors or no whatever other things that could come up with this was a broader way to prevent massage parlors from coming here. I think that's what everyone would agree with, we don't want those in our city. So I guess if we just leave it as is, we can stay the way. Or what would be a different alternative that would accomplish the same goal? Or if we did repeal it, how quickly could we get back in the books if we started noticing these businesses coming to the city?
Well, then it's up to the council that's sitting at that point in time. And this was, this was, this was a heavy lift to get this passed when we first passed it. Even though there was decades of evidence of this going on, this was a heavy lift. We had people in the council who did not wanna get past this as an ordinance. So, you know, do you have to actually change the wording of it, Attorney Drela, if we just decide that we're gonna not push the yearly registration? Can she just send out, can we, clerk just send out a letter saying, you are a business in good standing and you do not have to renew and give them, you know, what do you want, two years, five years, whatever?
The ordinance requires a one-year annual registration, you wanna change it, just change it. Doesn't cost anything to change an ordinance on paper as put on. So if you're gonna change that, I'd recommend changing that. In response to the other options that are out there, sure, there's lots of ways to skin a cat, you hear me say that all the time. When this was adopted, this was the most comprehensive way to try and achieve what the goal was at that time. And again, it's not just massage parlors, I mean, it can be used against a wide, a wide variety of illegal activity. Some of which we already have other methods of trying to control it, but but this is the most broad way of trying to do that. The reality is, you know, we take somebody, worst case scenario, I'll give you the best case scenario first. They get a license, we get enough proof that they're operating some kind of illegal activity, whether it's prostitution, pornography, illegal sales of stolen property, whatever, alright? And they come to the commission, we revoke their license if they have one, and shut them down, they just shut down. That's the best case scenario. That's similar to what happened with the massage parlors, the three that surrendered their licenses. Now granted, they were in criminal court too. And the judge had issued bond conditions saying they couldn't be open either. With three of them, not the fourth one. The worst case scenario is they have a license or they don't have a license. They come to the commission or I go to court and sue them for not having a license, or they go to the commission and get the license suspended, and they say, I don't care, and they stay open anyway. At that point, I have to go apply to the circuit court showing that they don't have the license, have the court issue an injunction to shut them down. Whether to get that far, you never know, I don't think so. That would take thirty to sixty days minimum to get that in front of the judge. But that's the timeframe you're looking at with respect to these things. And where this helps out is those cases where perhaps we don't have proof of legal activity beyond a reasonable doubt with which to receive conviction, it has somebody sent to the penitentiary. But we have proof to prove by a preponderance of the evidence that it was going on. So we can shut them down for a period of time.
It doesn't give them out if we just extend the renewal period, I mean, that's...
Renewal period, it has nothing to do with renewal period. Flurry was asking about other mechanisms.
Let me paint a picture for one of the businesses. So one of the businesses that has a couple of manufacturing plants here in town said, well, what happens if somebody's caught in my parking lot that's an employee and they're dealing drugs? Does that make me, am I responsible? And am I gonna have to have my business license repealed? And there were questions like that. Because we wanted, I think one of the things we initially asked was if there's a manager of the business, we wanted the manager's name, etc. So if you got a bad manager and he's dealing drugs out the back door, selling stolen goods or whatever, is that gonna make the business owner have to close the business? Those are all things that end up in court. And so I think that we're independent thinkers in this community. Everybody understands that. Boone County and Belvedere are independent thinkers, we want less government whenever possible. And I agree with that. But if this ain't broke and we can just make an amendment to it to say whatever the clerk decides she wants, two-year renewal, three-year renewal, and keep this on the books and just not go heavy-handed toward anybody unless they're doing something nefarious. Does that, is that meet with everybody? Alderman Porter?
Well, I was just gonna make one suggestion for Sarah. If this is not already in the letter that you sent out to the businesses, maybe you should mention that in order to qualify for any of the grants that might come along like the CARES grant, that you need to be registered. Maybe that'll encourage people, more people to, you know, register with the city for the registration.
Yes, thank you.
And going along with what the clerk said and for the grants and things like that, a one-time registration, we wouldn't have had any issues with any of the grant applicants this year. Because most, I think all of them at one point in time had a registration, it had just overlapped, whether it was COVID or something else. I think every business I walked into had a sticker in the window or somewhere, it just... I mean, we were getting updated registrations, but at one point in time, they had one. So if there just was no renewal process, we wouldn't have had any issues.
Yeah, it's kind of a get to know you for new businesses, you know? So that our public safety people know who's there and who they need to talk to and who to contact and what the number is. So those are pretty easy changes, what do you think? Is everybody good with that, those changes? So we can send our brilliant attorney away to his room and he can rewrite it in that fashion and bring it back for approval?
This started as a discussion of perhaps possibly repealing the ordinance's entirety. Then there was a discussion of making the penalty portion of the failed penalty license go away. And now there's been discussion of perhaps eliminating the annual renewal of the business registration license. So what this commission or committee is coming down to is that they'd like to recommend eliminating the annual renewal. I'd suggest a motion to that effect to forward a council on draft.
Motion, Mike Snow. I have a second.
I was sorry.
Any further questions or comments, discussion on the changing of the, the one-time registration? All those in favor, will your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, name?
Burton?
Hang on, I couldn't hear, what's this motion for?
It was, the motion was to remove the annual renewal requirement for the business registration license.
Okay, aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank? Frank?
Alderman Frank?
Aye.
Thank you.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Avrivalo?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
So that motion is passed. And it will be rewritten and presented for Monday night.
Does that, does that take two readings or is it just one deal since we're just amending the ordinance?
The question, in case anybody didn't hear it, was whether or not this amendment to the ordinance would require two readings. The answer is yes, it would. And the only way to avoid that, still two readings, but is to waive the two-week layover requirement in the city code. I wouldn't worry about it, we'll simply hold off on pushing renewals pending the outcome of the vote.
Well, that brings us to the end of our festivities this evening, folks, so I entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.